Good evening, welcome to the September 9th, 2019 city council meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Tonight's meeting will be adjourned in memory of former Seal Beach Mayor Norma Brandle Gibbs. And the Seal Beach Police Department Honor Guard. Come forward.
There you go. Present.
And Mayor Protemstasarsik say the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a review and justice for all.
Power down. Come. Right, two. Right, pick. Power.
All right, please sit. City Clerk, will you please take roll?
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Protemstasarsik.
Here.
Councilmember Vera Papa.
Here.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, by motion of the city council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item?
I'd like to pull items H and I.
City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, four communications were received regarding various agenda items that were distributed to council and made available to the public.
As their call for a motion. So moved.
I second.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
All right, motion carries five zero. And we have one presentation for National Preparedness Month. I'll call upon Corporal Brian Gray to provide a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff, for this opportunity to discuss a little bit about emergency preparedness here in September. As you may or may not know, September is National Preparedness Month, and FEMA has been sponsoring that since 2004. What they do is every September try to encourage people to take steps that will help them be prepared when we have some kind of emergency and we know the big one's coming, we just don't know when. So the best we can prepare ourselves, the better off we'll be. Before we get into that, the first thing I'd like to talk about is alert and warning systems. The first one that we predominantly use here in Orange County is Alert OC. It's a county resource, the county can put out alerts, and as well as the city. If you're in this room, I would highly encourage you to go to alertoc.org and sign up, fill out a little form, you can accept landline messages, text messages, and emails. The next one is Nixle, this is actually my favorite one because it's so easy to sign up. If you send a text message to the number 888-777, and in the body of the message you just put your zip code, you're in. You can do Seal Beach if you work in Seal Beach, and you can put your home city if you live outside of the city. This one, you'll also get notifications for local community events, hazards, if there was a car accident that were to close down PCH for a couple hours, this is a tool that we might put that information out. So it's not always catastrophic. Shake Alert, this is a big one that's been in the news recently. It's a partnership between LA and Caltech, and it's still in its experimental phase, but basically if you sign up for this app, they will push out when they reach a certain threshold. I think right now it's 5.0. And the idea is if you're down the path of the earthquake, you may get five or 10 seconds that could save your life, if you can get under a desk, or if you're on the highway and pull over. So I'd suggest you sign up for it, a few seconds may matter. These are the PD social media websites. We have a pretty robust social media team right now, and we're constantly pushing out emergency preparedness disaster information on our Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram, so I'd recommend if you have any of those, sign up, we'll be pushing those out all of September. So what can you do to prepare? The reason I'm here. Get a kit, make a plan, and be educated. I'm going to talk about each of those a little bit. So get a kit. You can, there's a couple ways you can go about it. You can build it yourself, you can get an old backpack and buy the supplies you think you need, or you can buy it fully put together. Amazon has a bunch of them, you can go to Kmart, Walmart, and there's different types of kits, as you can tell, there's a first aid kit, car kit, office kit. If you do something with animals, you can put an extra leash in there, extra food, medication, whatever you think you may need in the event of a disaster. And this isn't a once and done kind of thing. For those of you who've maybe bought a kit five years ago, it's time to maybe go look through that and replace the water, the food, because they have shelf lives. I think most of these packages of water last up to five years, so that's a starting point. And then some of the other foods, you've got to look at those dates because you may have to go through it every six months or a year, and refresh it. Mitigating the hazards. There's a couple things you can do around your house, including these locks that keep drawers and kitchen cabinets in place. When we have an earthquake, most folks, it's not the situation where your roof caves in and lands on top of you and there's nothing you can do about it. A lot of the injuries that we suffer from are stepping on broken glass, dishes, that kind of thing, glass from the windows. So they say don't put your bed next to the window. So these are just a couple little things you can take and might help you out in the case we have a significant earthquake. Emergency lighting's a big one. I think most of us hopefully have big, heavy-duty flashlights somewhere near their bed or in their bedroom, but who buys a bunch of batteries? You may be good for a couple hours, but the batteries go quick. If power's out, you won't be able to use rechargeable batteries, so you might want to stock up at Costco. They're not paying me to get a significant amount of batteries. There's also those, the bottom right corner, those battery-powered lights, you can easily just mount those on a wall, push a button, they turn on, and you don't have to grab them, they're already there. Great place to put them is at the top of the stairs, bottom of the stairs, any pathway that might take you out of the dangerous area. Make a plan. This is probably the second most important one. Talk with your family, discuss what you're going to do. Talk about if we have a 7.0 earthquake, and everybody in the house is in different areas, what are you going to do? Do you have a rally point? Do you have a meetup point? What if cell phones aren't working? You have to discuss these, and make sure your family is on these alert and warning notification systems. Teach your kids how to turn off the utilities and when they should do that. Make a game out of it, you can help the kids make the emergency kits, something to make it fun, fun for the kids. If, whatever business, or if you're in your residence, or if you're in a business, and it's structurally sound, you may have to stay there for several days, you may not be able to leave. So this is why FEMA constantly pushes the 72-hour rule for water and food. Make sure for each person, 72 hours' worth of food, drinking water, but also using the water to wash off, you know, scrapes and bumps, so you need a lot of water. If you need to evacuate, you want to get out as quickly and safely as you can. A lot of folks have go bags where they just have the bare essentials, copies of documents, recent pictures of family members in case you get separated. Make sure you lock your door, take everything with you. Always, always, always keep at least a half a tank of gas in your car at all times, because the last thing you want to do is, disaster hits, everybody's at the gas station filling up. You'll be ahead of the game if you're starting with a full tank. I'm going to talk about a couple resources that are local, ReadyOC. They have the website, readyoc.org. A ton of resources are available there. In fact, they just started a smartphone app that you can have right on your phone or tablet. A lot of resources, good ideas that you can pull from there. Local resources, get involved. I know a lot of you are familiar with West County CERT. CERT is our Community Emergency Response Team. We are a regional team, we join with some other local cities. We shoot for having two academies every year. We just graduated one in July, and I believe City Manager Ingram partook in the one last year. We teach light, search and rescue, medical triage, and other safety skills for, in the event something happens, folks can take care of themselves a little bit better and help their communities. RACI's, those are our ham radio folks. In the case of a catastrophic disaster, we may lose not only cell phones and hard-line phones, but our police radios might not work. So that's where our ham radio folks come in, and they can contact, you know, can go across the city and report back on damage or injury. So if you're a ham radio operator out there, come talk to me. Neighbor for Neighbor, if you're not familiar with Neighbor for Neighbor, this is a public outreach thing that we do here in Seal Beach. We'll come out to your community with the CERT truck, we bring out OCFA, and we encourage residents to come out, meet each other, get involved, kind of pool the resources, that way they know what they're dealing with. If John down the street has a generator, but somebody doesn't, they can kind of pool their resources together, and in the event of something catastrophic, it's not going to be the first time they've seen these people's faces, and they know what they have. If anybody has any follow-up questions or concerns, all of my contact information's up on the board. Don't hesitate to reach out, shoot an email, leave a voicemail, I will get back to you.
Thank you. I have a certificate for you.
Thank you, sir.
For National Preparedness Month, thanks for all the great information, Brian.
No, it'll be something good to see you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. I appreciate it. Thanks. I appreciate it. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city council pursuant to the Brown Act. The council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council, and not to any individual member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Or any oral communications.
Mayor, if I could, just a reminder for the public, since we have a public hearing tonight on the leisure world, traffic enforcement, and municipal code changes, they'll have an opportunity to speak during that item separately after the consent calendar is approved.
All right, so if you want to talk about the leisure world traffic, you can, there'll be a separate public discussion. Anyone like to come forward?
Are you?
Okay.
I didn't say anything at the last meeting, so now let's see this meeting. I want to thank Tim from the Recreation Department for getting all of the weeds on the path up to Pacific Coast Highway. He got them out so that the people that want to walk, the people that have dogs, don't have to get in the way of the bikes, especially the electric bikes. And now we have a problem down on the boardwalk with bikes. And I'm down there taking a picture, and guess what's coming after me? Right straight at me, electric bike. Now, you put all the burden on the homeowners, and there's no burden on electric bike having insurance. That's not right. Or the bikers, now that when they are having those runs, they do have insurance, because people get hurt down there, a lot of them. I don't know how many have filed suits against the city for not having the correct mileage that you're supposed to run down there. It's supposed to be five miles. But anyway, okay, I got that off. We don't need a bike trail in front of the boardwalk. I went over to the peninsula, there's nothing there, so don't tell me you're putting the burden on the homeowner, and that's not right. Okay, we have, how many now, farmers markets that people want to come down to Seal Beach? Now we have another one, and they want to have it put up there by the pier where the people go down and park and come back up. And we have a turkey trot coming up. Somebody wants to have a turkey trot the day before, think of the lights go on at the Christmas tree. We used to be kind of crazy in this city. I've been here longer than probably any of you, and we got it all tamed down. And now we're going crazy again, with all these people that want to come down here at the pier. I'm not sure they want to come to a farmer's market. They want to park, and they don't want to pay. They don't want to pay. I know over the Coastal Commission, I don't think they've given you permission to raise the pay yet for parking down on the beach. I do have a, it wasn't a lawsuit, it was negotiating with the lady that worked for Chief Joe. She negotiated. Who negotiated? The funds identified in the agreements were paid by the city insurance. No city funds were paid. Who pays the insurance? And it isn't over a million dollars now? If you're going to pull out of the insurance company, who's going to pay then? When are you going to, like I asked you probably six months ago? If they want to do sexual harassment, let them pay. Let them pay. Why should a taxpayer, and I'm glad Leisure World is here tonight, let them pay? And the city's insurer made the decision to resolve these matters. Who did? I, I did. Who did? Jill Ingram, City Manager. Well, she covered it up. So how did she get to negotiate? She covered it up for a hot couple years. So where are we getting here now? We're getting to the police study. What did it come back and say? What did that police study say? Close down the jail. Put too much money going over there. We could have hired probably four cops with all the money we're going to spend this year, because I've looked, you've already projected, it's going to be over $600,000 that we're going to pay to keep that jail open. And we're paying.
Thirty seconds to wrap up.
And we're paying when people can pay. There's one other thing that I will come back next week and talk about, that's the Surfside Colony, who has units, who's allowed to have bathrooms, don't have the correct setbacks, and Old Town needs to have the same thing with the units. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Woody Woodruff. I'm a business owner and a property owner in the 100th block of Main Street. And a little background before I get into the parking situation, I've been on the parking commissions before. I came and listened to all the things about parking, but I'd like to start first with how the process for the street fair went. Years ago, we had, somebody tried to bring in a street fair, and we had multiple public meetings on it. We had it go before the full council, and the council said, why would we do this? Why would we bring outside competing merchants to go against our local merchants? And even a year ago, when the same promoter that's trying to bring in the street fair now came, we had at least with our old city council person, one public meeting. And this time we had none. It's just been stuck back in the little public ads, or not the ads, you know, the, what is it, the notices in the back of the paper? I don't know too many people that read those. But also, we used to have papers sent to anybody within 300 feet of anything, like if you were a property owner, a resident, a business owner, and we're not doing any of that anymore, we're just doing again those notices. And the thing was, it's supposed to save money, but my understanding is any promoter has to pay for that, so we're not losing anything if they're still doing that, and then everybody knows. Not like the process now. And again, about the parking, one thing that we found in the parking meetings that everybody could agree on, residents and businesses, is we need more parking. That we're all suffering from it, and that was something that was three times more than any other thing that we could agree on. Yet we're talking about bringing in, on a busy night, this street fair to promote business. But again, everybody, you don't have to be a merchant to know that's a busy night. Monday or Tuesday is slow. And even though it's moved to the pier, when you look at the vendors and the support staff, that's 75 to 100 parking spaces easily. That's bigger than our municipal lot here. Now, if tomorrow you guys said, hey, we're going to give you a new lot like this one, even though it's smaller, that would help so much, all of us. But instead, you're talking about giving it away to out-of-town vendors, and I don't think it's going to stay up there. I don't see that. And we have, our theater's going to come online, that's over 400 seats in that place, like 410, 420, something like that. Where are they going to park? I know they have a deal with Chase, but that's not 24/7 parking, and that's limited. The people upstairs, they don't work banker hours, that rent the offices and stuff, and again, that's like, what, 50 spots maximum? I want to see Bay Theater. We all love it, we all want to see that flourish. But how are we going to do that if we start taking away parking for out-of-town businesses? And this is what's killing the street now. That is the number-one thing. I have my own parking lot, so I have many people that are coming in and saying, we loved Waltz, we're not going anymore. We loved Taya Main, we're not going anymore. We love your dress stores, we're not going anymore because we don't want to fight with it. And it's not just my clients, we hear this all the time. I go out of town, and I'll be in any town, and I start talking about what's happening here. Do you know they're actually going to try to give away our parking, they're going to do this or that? And people will pipe up. Like the other day, I was at Bolsachica, and this young family was overhearing me talk, and they said, that's so funny you talk about it, because Sunday we tried to go to Next Deli. We did three passes through all the blocks, and we finally had to leave. You know, I've never seen it like this. Unfortunately, a lot of the merchants are parking on Main Street, and a lot of them are the ones that, you know, have talked about these events and stuff, but we've done this before. We had a street fair in the 200 block, and you know what it did? It jacked up everybody, it jacked up all the residents that live around here. They were so upset. It just wrecked business. So when people say this is new, no, it's not new. We've done it before, and it just makes no sense. You go through the numbers of parking that we have, and all this money that we spent to have somebody tell us we don't have enough parking, and we're going to do this? No. Deny it. And anyway, even with that, if you don't deny this, we need to sit down and have some transparency. You need to explain to us how this process is going through. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Caviola. I'm a homeowner on 10th Street, and I am so opposed to this street fair. It's not a farmer's market. I work in Huntington Beach. It's a street fair, and it brings in people you don't want into Seal Beach. The other day, a homeless guy came to my house at 5:30 at night, knocking on the door, going out to my 18-year-old daughter, and when we opened the door, told him to get out of here, he came after us even more. I am so opposed to the fact that I had to find out from Nextdoor app tonight, not from a letter. I live on 10th Street, a block away. You guys can't give us a letter? This is a street fair. We don't need it. We have to support local businesses. And then what are you going to do with the park? You're going to clean the park up every week? Are you going to clean the grass? Because you're not cleaning Main Street. Main Street is dirty. Walk up and down Main Street, it's dirty. So this is unacceptable. We should have been notified. I literally was eating dinner, and Nextdoor came on, and Woody's letter was on there. And my husband laughed at me, said, I'm going down there, I'm done. Lived here over 30 years, I'm a homeowner. I should have gotten a letter. That's my two cents.
Good evening, Council, members of staff, citizens. Seth Eker, resident here in Old Town. It's a pleasure to be before you. My first comments are in regards to consent calendar items E and G. It's always a pleasure for me to read the agenda. When it talks about grant money, that's free money that's coming into our community, that's always something I'm supportive of. I did observe that in the pre-submitted public comments, one citizen, Dr. Robert Goldberg, I believe, asked a question of some concern about an offset, and I would say, based on my participation in the Seal Beach Police Foundation, to the best of my knowledge, as a founding director, not that I'm speaking absolutely, but the Seal Beach Police Foundation would be available in its mission statement to support this item should this funding be unavailable. It could simply be submitted as a grant. Additionally, today was the Seal Beach Police Foundation Annual Golf Tournament. I'm pleased to share with council and staff that I actually saw past Councilman Gary Miller there. It was well-attended, I saw most of the council staff there. It was really a delight to see other community leaders and business leaders. I want to thank my fellow board members, of course, our amazing police department, and others like Southland Credit, where I saw Tom Lent, and Fresh Cut Creative, and J.D. Curry and his team, because the foundation continues to raise funds in the interest of safety, security, and in support of our police department. The next item I'd like to comment on is the Lions. As chairman of the Lions Arts and Crafts Fair for this last weekend, it was three days, first day on Friday with assembly, and again, it was an incredibly successful event. I especially want to thank Councilman Joe Kelmick and Mayor Protemstasarsik for being there and making remarks, also Councilman Vera Papa. I believe, Tom, Mayor, you were out of town, so thank you for letting me know, and I know that you're supportive, and I think your son might have been there, and Councilman Masalavet. I'm- And Councilman Masalavet, I'm, I'm, you may have been there, I didn't see you. And I also wanted to thank members of staff who came to it. It's 104 vendors and nonprofit partners. Alameda's iCare and John Osborne was an amazing contributor and sponsor. Sun News, of course, is our official media sponsor. Republic Services. And thanks to the City Recreation, Public Works, and again, our police department. Thanks to Commander Gonchak. We were able to really work collaboratively to have police on-site during the fair, which was a new thing. Also, thanks to the Los Alamos School District and the various youth musicians that provided entertainment and created great success, and all of the Lions and Leos. And you may ask, where does the money go? Is this a fundraiser? Is this just a cultural activity? Well, the answer is yes, it is marginally profitable. It goes to local community and youth organizations, to the five pillars of Lionism, which include vision, and we do vision screenings and hearing screenings, diabetes, pediatric cancer, environment, and hunger. We also do emergency relief grants. We're supporting right now an LCIF grant that was already deployed of $100,000 to the Bahamas for Hurricane Dorian, and Lions are already there doing that. And our club has done a separate collection, and we invite anyone who wants to participate to send that to the Seal Beach Lions Club. We're also proud to say that some of that money goes to things that are local, like the Centennial Cottage, the Pier Clock, and our capital fund to potentially put a beautiful archway in the entrance of our Old Town District. The Lions work really hard on this. The Leos work really hard. It's the single largest fundraiser for the Leos, and they have their own charitable contributions. And I want to publicly thank all the citizens that also showed up, spent money, and supported our merchants, because that makes a difference. It's only one time a year. And unlike, let's say, a regular farmer's market, and I have no comment regarding that either way, the issue for me is that this is an annual event that really adds cultural value, diversity, and interesting art and music to our community. And I would encourage Council and staff to, and we invite you, to be a co-partner and co-sponsor of this event. Last but not least, I would like to acknowledge that preparedness indeed does matter. And Corporal Gray brings up some incredibly good points. I know because my husband's a pilot, there's a go-bag. I have a go-bag. My passport, cash, a number of items, ready to go. Because I don't know when I might have to leave. And whether or not, whatever country I'm in, I have a go-bag. And it's ready to go. And it, yes, has drinking water in it, and yes, it has protein bars, and yes, it has a first aid kit, and yes, it has duplications of all my medications. And I think an ounce of preparedness is worth a pound of cure. Because we never know what could happen. Black Swan events happened, and Bahamas were destroyed.
Your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Okay, City Attorney Steele, do you have anything to report?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Prior to the meeting this evening, the City Council met in closed session regarding the items on the posted agenda and took no reportable action.
And City Manager report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have a couple items tonight. As the Council and public will recall, a couple months ago, we had the opportunity to have some of our Navy service men and women from San Diego come and join us for a beach cleanup, just to volunteer their time in our community. And excited to say that they'll be back to join us on Wednesday, September 18th, from 8:00 to noon. So want to invite the Council and the community and any other volunteers who'd like to participate in this beach cleanup event, just to meet at the base of the pier at 8:00 a.m. As you know, these are really great opportunities for city staff and the community to interact with our military personnel while volunteering time and giving back to the community. So again, that's Wednesday, September 18th, which is next week, from 8:00 to noon. Meet at the pier at 8:00. Second of all, parking, not quite as exciting, but still part of what we do here. Our parking permit renewal time is getting close, and the city will be issuing a press release soon. But just wanted to say that the renewal date for residential and guest permit parking is November 1st. And really trying to get this information out as soon as we can, and earlier this year, because as we continue to modernize the permitting process, the parking permits will be issued electronically. And for the first time, our residents will no longer need to place a residential parking permit decal on their vehicles. So like I said, we'll be issuing a press release about this, and that information will be coming out soon. But if anyone has any questions, right now, they can contact the Finance Department at (562) 431-2527, extension 1332. And then finally, another event I want to invite the Council and the community to. Marine Safety Chief Joe Bailey's planned a drowning prevention workshop this Saturday, September 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, at the Marina Center in conjunction with Orange County Drowning Prevention Task Force and Supervisor Steele's office. And so we encourage residents to attend and hear about the drowning prevention efforts of the Orange County Drowning Prevention Task Force, along with Chief Joe Bailey and the advocacy efforts that he continues to work towards through his leadership on that task force to get the word out about drowning prevention. So again, that's this Saturday, September 14th, from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Marina Center. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Move on to Council comments. Councilman Vera Papa?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Moore. Yeah, I did attend the Arts and Crafts Fair. It was a well-attended and very fun event. I had a great time, as well as my wife. Thank you to the, all the volunteers, they did a great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Kalmak?
I also attended the Arts and Crafts Fair, which has greatly matured over the recent years. I think the quality of the artwork and the presentation by, by the artists has really come along. And again, thanks to the Lions for helping with that improvement. I, along with other council members, attended the badge presentation for the new officers that we hired and the other promotions within our police department. And I have to tell you that it really indicated how closely knit that our police department is. And not just because it's a small department and you have a greater ability to do that theoretically. Our, our police officers really do get to know each other. It was nice to see the, that the badges were pinned onto the new officers by their spouses. And their kids were there, and grandparents were in the audience. And I mean, there really is a sense of family in our department. And I think that's something that we can all be proud of, and also take a lot of comfort in knowing that. Because that, that works its way down to our police department's interaction with the community as well. So thank you.
Mayor Protam Sustarsik?
Yes. Excuse me. I also attended the Arts and Crafts Fair, and I attended the police department penning ceremony. Also enjoyed that very much. I also attended a public hearing put on by the Register of, Registrar Voters' Office. Neil Kelly was there, and he was giving an update on the vote center transition. They're still working on vote center locations and vetting out addresses all over the county. But just, just gave us an update that the, in the long run, the cost is going to be less. It's going to be Registrar of Voters' employees that will be helping out, and they will be spaced around the county. I was concerned that, you know, maybe we were going to be too small, and we wouldn't have something in our area. So they're not set yet, but it looks like we, we don't need to worry about that. They have possible locations down here, maybe closer to the freeway up in Los Alamos. They're also going to have drop locations. So those of you who don't care to mail your ballot in, but feel more secure in giving it to the ROV, they're going to have secure kind of mailbox drop locations. And these and the vote centers are going to be probably located close to public buildings and also retail centers, so that it's convenient for you to drop them off or go to the vote center. The, they're, they're going to have electronic registration at the vote center. So if you happen to be at work and you want to vote, you can go in there, and they will look up your home precinct, and you'll be able to vote on your own ballot, not just wherever you happen to be. And they're going, they're kind of going back to paper. So there will be a paper trail. And anyway, it's very interesting to hear, to hear all that's involved in, in what's happening. But I think the, they said December is when the locations of the vote centers will be announced. And then they'll have a pretty good media campaign in January and February before the election to let everybody know about the changes that are happening. So, thank you.
Councilmember Masalavet?
I also attended the badging ceremony. It was really quite fulfilling. I enjoy the, being around all of our police people. It's quite a group there. They do so much for this community. It's just remarkable. You've heard me speak about that before. One of the meetings I went to this month was the Water Agency of Orange County. And this month, the, the discussion was on water quality and availability. A lot of it was very technical and went somewhere over my head. They were talking, you know, chemicals and all that kind of stuff, you know? But anyway, it sounds like our water quality is in really good shape. And we won't be having a problem with that. The sanitation district is plugging away. I'm on the Operations Subcommittee, and we go over the money that they spend. And if you think we're spending money here, you have not seen anything. They spend a lot of money. They have a lot of equipment that gets very costly, and a lot of engineering contracts are, that are very costly. So it's always an interesting meeting to go to. And it's open to the public if any of you really want to go and find out. And then the last, I've saved the best for last. Vector control. Now, I hate to keep nagging you. Every meeting I go to in Leisure World where I have to speak, I talk about vector control. You need to be aware of the water standing in your flower pots or on the curb, anywhere. There has been a plethora of West Nile virus in the last couple of weeks. And in fact, they are spraying, doing some ground spraying in Garden Grove and Anaheim. So we don't want to get to that point. Pay attention. Watch the water that's standing around your property and get rid of it. And talk to your neighbors if you notice something. Have them dump their little water things, too. And maybe we'll get away with no West Nile virus infections in our community. And that's all I have.
I just came back from Washington, DC, where I got several mosquito bites. Probably scared.
Different ones over there, they're deadlier.
At the, went to the last OCFA meeting. It was announced that they received yet another $4.5 million grant, which will include software from UC San Diego that helps determine the perimeter of the brush fires, along with where the fire's heading. So this will help communities evacuate more effectively and for firefighters to know where to focus best on fighting the fire. They're really using cutting-edge technology to help fight fires. After meeting with Assistant City Manager Patrick Giegos, I'm excited about the upcoming changes in technology with the city. Soon, employees will be using Office 365 and cloud services more, and we'll finally get a new phone system that's more reliable. Technology improvements will allow our existing employees to respond quicker to residents and operate more efficiently. I've also been hearing a lot of positive feedback from my residents and on social media that the city is doing a great job with landscaping. And people feel safer with the increased police presence we have. So thank you to all the city employees for all your hard work. And we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. And except for H and I, is there a call for a motion?
Move.
I'll second.
Motion carries. And I'll move to item H, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We'd be happy to present a staff report unless Mayor Protam Sustarsik, you just had some specific questions that we can address for you.
Just, I would, I just think there was a little bit of confusion as to what exactly this did. But I was also, there was a comment that I received in my notes here that we didn't get this reported this year. So I was just wanting to see if we were, this will be reported to us, or, and, and just concerning because it's a big number and adds to our, adds. So anyway, just concern about our budget and.
So then why don't I go ahead and have our Finance Director, Vicky Beetley, just briefly summarize what Gov Invest does for us, our GASB 75 requirement. And again, this item was brought to you, as all of you know, it was within staff signing authority to approve this agreement. But because we want to take advantage of a discount on the cost, it's a five-year agreement, so we felt it was prudent to bring it to you for approval. But having said that, I'll have Vicky to summarize what this will do for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram and Mayor, members of the Council. So Gov Invest actually provides two separate benefits for the city. There is a cloud-based software that we have that helps us know what our unfunded liabilities are for our OPEB and for our pension. And we're still working on putting all of that information together. Prior to having the cloud-based software, Gov Invest actually provided what's called actuarial services for us with our other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPEB, otherwise known as retiree health. And so every couple of years, the city has to have an actuarial valuation. Prior to Gov Invest implementation, the city was paying significantly more than we pay Gov Invest for that valuation, to the tune of sometimes $10,000 to $15,000. So we implemented the software, the first part, the OPEB part, for the retiree health. And implementing that software then gave Gov Invest the ability to run the actuarial valuation for us at a discounted rate even, because we had the software implemented in the, in the first year that we did this. So now we've got the software, we've got the actuarial valuation. The actuarial valuation needs to be done every two years, and then there's something called a roll forward that needs to be done in the interim. So it's part of these accounting requirements, Government Accounting Standards Board Rule 75. So bringing this, as City Manager said, we're looking forward to a discount. Now, to your question, during the budget presentations every year, I talk about OPEB, and I talk about the OPEB valuation. So it's, hasn't typically been brought to the city as a report separately, because we include the dollar amounts of the OPEB payment requirements in part of our budget process. If it's something that the council would like to actually hear a presentation on the report, then, then certainly that could happen. But it's typically, has been incorporated as part of our budget process. I talk about pension, I talk about OPEB, and talk about the cost. And then in our meetings and preparation of the budget, we also talk about the difference between the OPEB cost last year versus the OPEB cost this year. So it's, again, not in the practice of the city to bring an actual report to the City Council and say, here's our report, because it's more of an economic tool that we use to put the budget together.
Yeah, I, I was more interested, just because it seemed like there was a big increase. So I was just sort of asking if you could warn us if, in a timely manner, if we're going to have a big increase, that sort of thing.
Okay, so the, the increase sort of happens in arrears. So when we do the, the actuarial valuation, it's a look backward.
Okay.
Not a look forward.
Okay.
So when we have the document. So when we have the document done, we say, hey, here's what we had and here's what it's saying now we have to have. And so when we talk about budget variances, I talk about the OPEB being higher and explain why. So now for the current fiscal year, we'll have a new number based upon a backward-looking number. So it, it's, it is a confusing piece of information because it does look backwards. But if you think about it, even our CalPERS pension costs are based upon two years behind because they look backwards and sort of chew everything up. So this is sort of a similar circumstance where we do the best to provide the information. The roll-forward component that is in this agreement is something new. And that roll-forward component will actually refresh the numbers to a current number.
Oh, okay.
So when we have the, when we have the next budget workshop, we'll actually have a current number for the budget versus last year's estimated number.
Okay, okay, thank you, that helped.
Can we set aside time in the budget to discuss this particular item?
Sure.
Yeah.
In the, when we do the budget?
For the future.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries, 5-0. We'll move on to item I, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, and I think on this item, I will ask staff to just briefly summarize the staff report. I'll call Tim Kelsey, our Recreation Manager, forward. And then, of course, we'll be available for questions. Tim?
Thank you. Just to give a brief report, the item before, council is asking to agree to a professional service agreement with Golden Touch Cleaning Solutions of a three-year term. They provide janitorial services at the city's 13 sites that receive janitorial. The agreement would include the service and all of the paper goods and goods that are included within it. If there's any questions, I can go ahead and answer specific questions.
Do, does Golden Touch provide the supplies or does that supply?
Correct, correct. The supplies are provided.
All-encompassing. And within the contract, will there be the ability to, based on circumstances, like an incredibly hot winter where we're getting a lot of attendance at the beach, that we can, you know, beef up the cleaning of the pier bathrooms as an example?
Yes, yes, we made it a look at the scope and bring it back to you, depending on what the increase is. But yes, it does. They, as a service, they definitely do have the ability to do so from a service provider.
Questions I had regarding the, also regarding the bathrooms, I have people that are interested in bath, very interested in the bathrooms. It talks about porters, but it didn't, I didn't really see exactly what a porter did. And I wasn't sure if there was, well, go ahead.
Yes, what, what they do is they clean the men's restroom at the pier, then they clean the women's restroom at the pier. And then they go to First Street and they clean the men's restroom and then the women's. And then they come back and start over again.
Okay, so we're talking.
So it's a porter for that service. It's one person.
One porter, one person?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, that's been what we've been doing for the past year since the restaurant closed. And it has worked as good as it can. I mean, obviously, the restrooms have challenges. As I think that's pretty consistent if you talk to any beach community that the public restrooms have obvious challenges. What we do is we also do have staff that's available to help out if there's additional issues, graffiti or other items like that. They do go in and pressure wash too, I think, weekly.
Pressure wash?
Both facilities, so we will continue that service. If there is an issue that arises that may be beyond the care of a janitor, then our staff is available seven days a week to help out with that.
Yeah, he asked my question about supplies, so that's.
Very popular.
I just had a quick question about what happens during special events. Can you kind of go over that briefly, just to?
Yeah, well, during, during special events, traditionally, it's actually covered just in the base contract schedule. So we don't really have to worry about the special events so much with care to the beach restrooms. With the community centers, we actually have the facilities staffed. And if there is additional cost, it's billed to the person that's renting the facility. So it's not additional cost to the city.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Please vote. Motion carries, 5-0. And I'll move to public hearing. Is there, take public comments?
Actually, if we, if just have a moment, we have staff an opportunity to summarize the staff report. And then what we would do is take initial comments and questions from the council and then open it up for public comment.
Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll turn this item over. As all of you know, this was a team effort. But I'm going to ask Patrick Iegos, our Assistant City Manager, to present this item tonight. Patrick?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, we ask that the city council hold a public hearing and introduce, read by title only, and waive further reading of ordinance 1680, approving the changes to the City of Seal Beach Municipal Code, finding and declaring that the provisions of the California Vehicle Code shall apply to certain privately-owned streets within Leisure World, including the regulation of golf carts on such streets, and authorize the Chief of Police to provide traffic enforcement on the privately-owned streets in Leisure World. In July 2019, the Board of Directors of the Golden Rain Foundation, commonly known as GRF, as the owner of privately-owned streets in Leisure World, requested that the Seal Beach Police Department provide traffic enforcement on the streets in Leisure World. They believe that the presence of the Seal Beach Police Department will have an immediate positive effect on the safety of Seal Beach residents within Leisure World. To include the streets in Leisure World, the city council must make certain findings pursuant to the requirements of the California Vehicle Code, Section 201107.5. The city council provided written notice of this action to the GRF as the owner of the privately-owned streets and must hold a public hearing on this item. Ordinance 1680, which is before the council, staff recommends council's consideration of this ordinance. With that, staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Any council member questions?
Yeah, question, if, if we do want to embark on enforcement, traffic enforcement, will there be the requirement to do the traffic studies to determine what the speed limits would need to be for all of those streets, including the private ones? Or can, can that be initially arbitrarily set? And then if you want to change it, you have to do the traffic study?
I'm going to answer that question.
Thank you.
The Golden Rain Foundation hired a traffic engineer to complete a study to make sure that the streets and the markings and the si, street signage met the California Vehicle Code. So it's in line with what they, what the police department needs to enforce.
And just to add to that, the traffic study requirement is only if, is only relevant if you want to raise the speed limits to, to a level above a base speed limit. And in this case, there's no proposition to, to raise the speed limits. So we don't have to justify the minimum. We have to justify an increase.
Any other council member questions?
Do we know if parking will be enforced as part of this activity or how will that work?
Chief Miller, do you want to handle that?
I don't, but I will. We routinely, right now, we respond as a result of calls for service. So that's going to continue the way it is. So we'll do red curbs and, and handicap and, and all those typical things. But right now, we really don't enforce any type of other type of parking enforcement other than calls related to that. And that will continue.
And what you're adding to the municipal code is a requirement that the vehicle code, traffic provisions apply on the streets in Leisure World. So that's not all of the, the parking stuff that's applicable in the, in our municipal code. We're really talking about speed limits, stop signs, no parking in the red, those kind of vehicle code provisions that, that get enforced on any street. So all those markings have been up to date and current then? Has that been verified from our end or how does that work? We just take a letter from Leisure World and say it's, everything's okay? Or do we do our, an independent study on that? Because I know that's, gets really critical when you have, you know, stop bars and crosswalks and stop sign heights and distances from the curb and so on and so forth. I just want to clarify that that has been, you know, verified, not just by Leisure World, which is great to have that. But I mean, I would imagine someone from our end would have a say-so on that too.
I can answer that. Yes, before we actually do any type of, let's, let's use speed enforcement. For us to use any type of laser engineering and we'd have to see those and check them and make sure that they're verified by an engineer. And obviously, we'll work with Steve on that. But typically, all those are as a result of some engineer that's licensed from Leisure World. And they've already done that.
Licensed from the state.
And, and we've already done that. So we met with Leisure World throughout this process. So we feel it's all applicable as of now.
And just a question, service to the rest of the city is not expected to be negatively affected by? It has a question of how much time you will be spending in Leisure World or?
We're not dedicating anybody to Leisure World for traffic enforcement, just like we really don't dedicate anybody in, in anywhere in the city unless it's complaint-driven or there's a, a problem that exists. Our motor officers actually go throughout the entire community and, and same with the patrol officers. So they'll do typical enforcement wherever they feel it's necessary to educate the public.
Okay, thank you.
So for clarity, the municipal code was initiated by the Leisure World Board of Directors to come forward. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you have that, you have that letter in your, in your packet.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
Good evening, Mayor Moore and city council members. My name is Linda Stone and I am president of the Golden Rain Foundation. Please excuse me, I forgot my glasses at home. So I'm going to try and stumble through this. First, I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda. This has been a long time coming for Leisure World. We've spent a couple of years being certified at the CAM UTCD. And we are certified, our streets are certified. And I also want to thank you for your deference towards our golf carts. We have, I believe, around 500, 700 golf carts. And the deference that you've made into the changes is very much appreciated. It's been very difficult to enforce traffic. We have a significant amount of shareholders, visitors, residents, that totally ignore stop signs and speeding. Those are the two biggest ones. They don't, some don't even take the stop sign as a sign, not even a suggestion. They're lucky if they tap on their brakes. It causes a lot of problems within Leisure World. And also, when they leave Leisure World, they're going onto the public streets and they're continuing with the same behavior. So let's stop it before they leave. Speeding. Our speed limit throughout Leisure World is 25 miles an hour. And we've had a lot that go 50 miles or more. It's very dangerous. So we, I implore you to please vote to the changes to ordinance 16, it's 1680, I believe. Yes, thank you. Any consideration that you have, I would appreciate it very much. And thank you for your time.
Council, staff, good evening. It feels strange being on this side of change. I'm Mike Levitt. I'm a 45-year resident of Seal Beach, the last 23 years in Leisure World. Tonight, I'm here to represent the Rolling Thunder Golf Cart Club. Seven or eight years ago, a bunch of friends got together who had golf, golf carts and said, we can do something. We can make these carts better. We can use our carts to help the community. We can carry people or groceries or something if they don't have some way to carry their own. So we formed a club. And right now, we have close to 300 members. Most of these people have golf carts. Of the 512 golf cart clubs, golf carts that are represented and registered in Leisure World, nearly half of those belong to the club. So those of us in the club take this very seriously. We believe in safety, we believe in helping other people. Now, as with the other members of the Golf Cart Club Board of Directors, I look forward to the day, hopefully very soon, when your offices can help us, help our pedestrians by targeting the bad drivers in Leisure World who menace our streets, ignore our rules and our safety. And we're talking not just cars, we're talking about golf carts. A lot of the, a lot of, we have grandparents who have their grandkids driving golf carts in the weekend. And these kids have no idea what they can do and how bad and dangerous it is. But they're going to go down the street as fast as they can. So I look forward to the chief's officers coming in there and helping to stop what's going on. We just ask that you and your police officers realize that many of the golf cart drivers have no other means of transportation. They're too old, they've given up the driver's licenses, they've given up cars. These carts give them back their sense of independence and freedom. And it would be, well, it would be just wrong to punish them or any of the rest of us because our golf carts have the wrong number of seats or lack some of the features that the factory never installed in the first place. And just for a minute to elaborate, make, make that more sense, what we've been told is that the state of California says that if you have one seat too many in a golf cart, you have to have it registered with the state. And you have to have a license on your golf cart like you would on a car. And to us, this makes no sense. It's a huge cost that we don't think that any of us need to have. We're not going anywhere. You can't go more than 18 miles an hour in a golf cart. Nobody, how many seats you have? Our golf carts didn't come with turn signals, they didn't come with windshield wipers. The state says you have to have them. We're asking you, please, give us a break. Those small things have never been a problem. Thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns and good night.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. It's a pleasure to be back here. I think it's the first time in a long time I've had something I really felt strongly about. The issue of bringing in a traffic officer into Leisure World has taken us almost five years to come to a conclusion. We have spent over six figures getting certified and doing everything right that we could do right to make sure there's that. Because we do have people breaking the.
right to make sure there's that because we do have people breaking the motor vehicle laws in Leisure World. You can look at not only running stop signs, speeding, crosswalks. Sometimes, a short story, I was crossing a street. I could tell that car wasn't going to stop. I was in the middle. I, she went past me. I said, "Shame on you," and she gave me the finger. And that's sort of an attitude that people think this is private property. I can do anything I want in here. And of course, your police department is so helpful with all the other issues that we have, but we need somebody to be there. I can think of a couple streets in particular that just literally, boom, boom, and it's a stop sign. And you just have to wait to make sure everything comes out right. And another issue that we have in Leisure World is unlicensed drivers. I would believe a traffic officer, when stopping somebody, can really do something about that. We've worked very hard at trying to regulate our own parking, to try to make sure that we do have registered cars and licensed drivers, but it gets past us. And if you can imagine that being 60, 70, and now 80 years old, if my car was taken away from me because I couldn't drive, I'd really feel bad. And everybody thinks, "Well, I'm just driving in Leisure World, so it's okay." And we have with us our Director of Security and he can attest to the number of cars that have little fender things in it. And you can almost tell when a neighbor's car now has four or five dented fenders, something's wrong. But we can't do much about it and our police department can. So please, vote favorably on this. We need it. We're a third of your town. We take care of our own streets. We pay a lot in property taxes. We are an integral member and part of your city. So please take heed and thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name's Phil Singer. I lived in Leisure World for many years. I live on the number one crossroads in Leisure World. I see everything every day. And trust me, in the morning, in the afternoon, people are not only going through the red lights, they're going through at 40, 50 miles an hour. They don't care. We have concerts, people are making left turns, they don't care who's in the crosswalk. We've had accidents. We have a great security chief. We tried education. It doesn't work. What works is fines. When people have to pay, then they realize, "Huh, maybe I better think of how I'm driving." Leisure World, when you, when something starts, it spreads like wildfire. People get fined, it'll spread like overnight. And people, we will never cure it, but at least we can control some of the speeding before somebody gets killed. Thank you for your time.
Happy birthday, Phil. And now you're older than me.
We grew up together and I'm very depressed now.
Mayor Moore, Councilpeople, thank you for letting me speak. I will not reiterate what my husband just said because many of our windows face that dangerous street and when we have our meals, we look out and see the terrible infractions. Make it quick, about two years ago, my very dear neighbor, Mrs. Eunice Kwan, was crossing in the crosswalk in the daytime and somebody ran over her and crushed her lower extremity. She was very, very severely injured and she's still suffering to this date. And I had gone to the hierarchies of Leisure World to try to plead my case to make things safer for everybody that lives there, especially the people that can't get across the light faster, in a wheelchair, they're in a walker, they have a dog. They're, so to make a long story short, in answer to my question, and I've discussed this with Mayor Moore before, to make us safer when we cross the streets, the hierarchy gave us this flag to wave. So when we cross the street, this is supposed to keep us from being killed. So as my son, the lawyer, says, I rest my case. And I'd like to give this flag to the police chief so when he comes to Leisure World, he'll be safe.
I'll make sure to pass it on. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Good evening, Council. Seth Heger again, member of, or resident of Old Town, excuse me. So I don't live in Leisure World, sorry. I, I, not yet, yes. Excellent point. And I do have to say it's amazing value for the money in Seal Beach, so you guys are winning. I just want to say, as a citizen and as an activist, knowing many of my fellow Lions and other friends who live in Leisure World, and I have spoken to several of them, specifically at the Arts and Crafts Fair, this seems concerning. And I want to bring up, and I didn't hear all of necessarily the public comments, but I want to bring up something that's very important to me personally, and that's drunk driving. I don't know how we could enforce drunk driving if we don't have some type of vehicle enforcement in Leisure World. And that definitely kills someone. And maybe not just even drunk driving, how about just driving under the influence or being intoxicated medically? There was someone who reversed on Main Street into a storefront who was impaired. And I don't mean to point fingers at anyone, but I think that for the interests of public safety and after reading and reviewing this ordinance and considering the fact that we have a fully and abundantly staffed police force, and I just was at the swearing and ceremony as well, and saw a whole group of very eager, youthful and excited parking enforcement people that were sworn in. And so if we have the capacity and it is not a significant financial impact, my God, why aren't these people getting services that other taxpayers would get? I mean, as far as I know, Leisure World pays taxes in sales tax, they pay property tax based on mutuals, I'm sure. So, I mean, I consider them my fellow citizens and taxpayers, too. So I would support them in their interest in making sure that they keep their community safe. And I understand they're, they're a private community, but okay. And why is that a problem if this is of no financial impact and we have the capacity to increase citizen safety? Because if we don't all start coming to agreement about safety in our communities, which clearly is a problem in America right now, I think if anyone is aware at all, that seems to be that there's an increasing escalation and shoot, I'm glad that we have a dedicated officer now there who's a detective and who's able to support this part of our community as well. Because, I'll tell you what, if I was in there and in one of these people's chairs, I would absolutely be here speaking. So, you know, I'm not here to throw a stone, I'm just here to make sure they get what everybody else is getting. Thank you.
Any other comments?
My name is Dr. Mark Chung. I drive in and out of Leisure World quite a bit, have patients there. At night, bicycle safety is really important. Frequently, bicycles are not lit, have red lights or headlights. The bicycle rider doesn't have proper helmet. That's part of safety, too, because I drive, I avoid accidents best I can, only if I could see them. Just want to bring that up, City Council and the police department. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And before we vote, are there any comments, further comments by council?
I'd just like to say that today I heard an astronomical number, that there are nearly 3 million trips through the gates at Leisure World a year. 3 million. That's not a small amount. Some people don't live there, come and visit, and they don't abide by the rules, the traffic rules, and to say nothing of the people who live there that don't comply with them. But I just wanted you to hear that number out loud because it really is a big number. Thanks.
And I've heard also from many residents how dangerous it is to drive and walk around there. And many people know that there will be no consequences currently and therefore are not obeying the stop signs and speed limits. I'd like to thank the GRF for requesting the city to start helping to enforce traffic laws on their streets. I'd also like to thank Police Chief Joe Miller and Commander Phil Gonczak for looking into the vehicle codes and what similar communities are doing and working with the city attorney on putting together an ordinance that does not punish golf cart owners, yet allows the city to start enforcing the traffic laws. And I strongly support this. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Mayor, if I could, while you're waiting for the computers to respond, just so that it's clear for the public, since we have several Leisure World residents here, just so that it's clear how the process works, assuming that this, the first reading moves forward tonight, then it would be agendized in two weeks on Monday, September 23rd, for the second reading. And then following, by law, we have to wait 30 days for that ordinance to take effect. But I will say that this gives us some time in the meantime, so we're not losing time. I'll work with the chief and the police department on public outreach so we can start doing some of those things while we're waiting for this process to complete, so.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. And everyone voted?
No. Mine didn't come up. Can't vote? Are you a yes, Shelley? It's not here. It's open. Are you all yes? How about all in favor, just say aye?
Motion carries five zero.
We just need to read. We just need to read the title, Mayor. It's ordinance 1680, an ordinance of the Seal Beach City Council, amending Chapter 8.05 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code, finding and declaring that the provisions of the California Vehicle Code shall apply to certain privately owned streets within Leisure World, authorizing the Chief of Police to provide traffic enforcement on said streets, and regulating the use of golf carts on said streets.
Thank you. And there's no unfinished business, no new business? Tonight's meeting will be adjourned in memory of former Seal Beach Mayor Norma Brandal Gibbs. Mrs. Gibbs passed away at her Huntington Beach home on August 25th at the age of 94. Gibbs' life profoundly changed the landscape of not only Seal Beach, but Huntington Beach and the people who have called the area home ever since. Mrs. Gibbs was the second woman to hold the position of mayor in Seal Beach, and she was elected in April 1960. She would later move to Huntington Beach and get elected to the council and serve as mayor from 1975 to 1976. Mrs. Gibbs opened Interval House in her Seal Beach home in 1979. Gibbs had been a survivor of domestic abuse in which she not only survived, but used her experience to advocate for other victims. Former Mayor Gibbs will be deeply missed by those who knew and loved her. On behalf of the City of Seal Beach, I send our condolences to her family and friends. And I'll adjourn the City Council to memory of former Seal Beach Mayor Norma Brandal Gibbs to Monday, September 23rd, 2019, at 5:00 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you.